You are recording.
Thank you, and I am calling to order this special meeting of the Lebanon Planning Board on Tuesday, June 16, 2020, at 6:30 PM. And as we've become used to, I will turn this to Tim Corwin of the Planning Department to tell us about procedures for this meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is Tim Corwin from the Planning Department. Other staff on the call tonight are David Brooks, Planning Director, Brian Vincent, City Engineer, and I believe Dwayne Egner from the Fire Department is or will be joining us for the first agenda item. I do have some prepared remarks to make. These are the same as what you've been hearing at the other Land Use Board meetings over the past several months, so bear with me as I repeat what you've probably heard several times already. Due to the coronavirus pandemic and pursuant to Governor Sununu's Emergency Order Number 12 issued on March 23, 2020, in accordance with Executive Order 2020-04, the Lebanon Planning Board is authorized to meet electronically without a quorum physically present in the same location. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting. However, in accordance with Emergency Order Number 12, the City of Lebanon has taken action to provide public access to the meeting by telephone with potential additional access by video to provide public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting and to provide a mechanism for the public to alert the Planning Board during the meeting if there are problems with access. For this meeting, Microsoft Teams is being used as the communication platform. All members of the Planning Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and participate in the meeting by visiting lebanonnh.gov/live and clicking on the link for the June 16 Planning Board meeting. Instructions on how to attend are provided on the webpage. To assist in the preparation of the meeting minutes and to ensure all participants are aware of who is participating, all speakers are asked to identify themselves and to spell their first and last names before beginning to speak. Likewise, we ask all board members and staff, please identify yourself before speaking. In order to ensure the best possible transmission of the meeting content, it is suggested that you disable the camera on your chosen device to reduce the video feed and increase the available bandwidth for all attendees. To improve sound quality and reduce the amount of feedback in the system, microphones will be muted by staff until you have a question or comment. For people using the Microsoft Teams platform, you can unmute yourself by clicking the button on the middle bottom portion of the screen if you hover your mouse in that area. For people calling in by phone, please press *6 to unmute yourself. If anyone has difficulty with access during the course of the meeting, please email us at planning@lebanonnh.gov. That's planning@lebanonnh.gov, or use the chat function on Microsoft Teams to indicate the issue that you're having. If we can provide technical assistance, we will try to do so. If we are unable to do so, it is still worthwhile to be aware of the problems that participants may be encountering so that we can try and address those for future meetings. In the event that we experience widespread and severe technical difficulties such that we are unable to hold the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. All votes that are taken during the meeting tonight shall be done by roll call vote. Please note that there may be a delay between the time that something is said and when you hear it at home, please be patient as we try and manage that delay. Again, we ask that you not use the chat function unless you need to communicate that you're experiencing technical difficulties. And finally, please note that this meeting is being recorded. It will be available on the city's website, lebanonnh.gov-agendacenter. With that, I will turn it back over to the chair.
Thank you, Tim. I will proceed now with a roll call again. As in the past, please just say if you are present and whether you're alone or there is someone else with you in the room where you're attending. So I am obviously present. I am alone. Jim Winnie may be late. Jim, are you there?
Counselor Winnie is present and alone.
Thank you, Jim. Joan?
Joan is present and alone.
Thank you. Laurel?
Laurel is present and alone.
Thank you. Kathy?
Kathy, unmute. She's unmuting.
Kathy is present, awake, and alone.
Thank you. Matt?
Matt Hall is present and alone.
And Tom?
Tom is present and alone.
Thank you very much. So this special meeting of the Planning Board was called primarily to continue our review and debate of the Bank Street project. We do, however, have a new application that we need to address. So with that in mind, we're going to devote roughly two and a quarter hours to the Bank Street if we need all of that time, reserving roughly 45 minutes at the end of the meeting for the ADIMAP application, other business, and the approval of the minutes. My understanding, so we're going to start with the Bank Street application, which is continued from the May 26 meeting. And my understanding is the applicant would like to make a presentation at this time with, I guess, some additional information. So I don't know, it's always a little difficult with this technology to know who from the applicant's side would like to make the presentation. Would one of you please just identify yourself?
Hi, this is Sue Reed from Jolynn Kish's office. Jolynn and I are both here in my office, and we're both going to be participating on the same link, just so you're aware that it's my name, but both of us are here. And we would like to kind of discuss the site and the landscape a little bit. And the landscape plan, I need to, with Tim Corwin's help, get the images on the screen. Do you want me to share them from my desk, or do you want to share them?
Sue, I can share them, but you'll need to be specific about which document you'd like me to open up and which page of that document you'd like me to be on.
Okay, so pardon me for just a moment while I, we have matching sets. I just need to see the numbers so I can give them to Tim correctly here.
I mean, if you want to try and share your screen, I mean, if you think that would be...
No, I think it's okay. I just need my list in front of me. If I could have number zero up first?
Okay.
Okay, so I thought we might spend a moment or two talking about the sighting, the choice of the site. It kind of leads into the landscaping. The history of the site of downtown Lebanon is very important to everyone. I'm well aware of that. I think it might help the neighbors to know a little bit about our background. Jolynn arrived in the Upper Valley in 1983. My family arrived in the Upper Valley in the 1760s and have been continuously in Lebanon ever since then. I live personally in Hanover, but our family does have land in Lebanon. It kind of does give me a longer perspective. I found this interesting kind of aerial shot from the 1880s showing downtown. It's really quite amazingly accurate. So you can see the Green Street houses seem to be quite accurately shown. I know the ones on Bank Street are well shown. It's kind of interesting because it ties into Lebanon's master plan and where, what places the master plan encourages you to avoid when you're choosing sites to develop or to put your own house in. They prefer that you not, for instance, put buildings on riverbanks or floodplains. For instance, Spencer Street is a 100-year floodplain. It's a good idea to avoid good arable land, good farmland. A lot of the properties up on Heda Road are using farmland. In the 1800s, they were putting their industry along the river for the hydropower. We're obviously not going to do that for housing. It's good to avoid steep slopes and ledges for housing. And this particular map doesn't show a lot of that, maybe a little bit down at the very bottom below the cemetery. So you can kind of see that Lebanon developed rather the way it did because it was avoiding some of those things. And so they were putting the industry along the river and the railroad tracks, and then they had a beautiful piece of flat land for the center of town, the civic buildings on the west and south side and north side of the green, or Coburn Park. And then what used to be called the parade ground became residential, and it got quite built up in the late 19th century along Green Street, as you can see there in the picture. Our two lots are the ones that are outlined in red. And in the 1880s, as shown here, they were, there were two houses. One was the Benton House. The other one was lived in by a number of different people, including Augustus Carter. And Mr. Benton's lot got subdivided, so his garden, which you can see to the right with a little pond, became built over time. So over time, there's been rather a history of the area getting more built up and more dense. We're very much following the development pattern shown in the slide and following what the master plan suggestions are in building on land where we're not, we're not building on wetland, we're not building on floodplain, we're not building where there's wildlife corridors, for instance. So we're building where, where in terms of land, it's very easy to build. And also, as Jolynn points out, where there is infrastructure already in place, where there are sewer lines, water lines, streets, power, and so on, that makes developing a lot easier. It's not so easy to build in town like this because the lots are smaller and there's a lot more scrutiny from the neighbors, as I'm sure many of the neighbors who've joined us tonight are aware of that. We have a lot more people looking over our shoulders than the big projects do up on Heda Road. It does mean the process takes longer. It means the city is looking at it quite closely. So it is a process that takes a little while. So we thank everyone for their patience as the project slowly moves through permitting. And now I would like to see the landscape slide, which is, it's in the sets number one to seven, and we did see these last week. So this first one, Tim's going to click through these for me. So that showed some of the landscaping waivers. Let's see, there's our general. Let's see, so we need to be down at, I think it's number five or six of these? And these were introduced last week, and if we need to go back to them, we can, but we hadn't, yes, that's the one we want. Thank you, Tim. So the landscaping, for those of you who aren't familiar with the process, with the site plan review, landscaping is very much prescriptive, prescribed by the site plan regulations. So there are some things that are quite obvious to do that we've done here. For instance, you put street trees along Bank Street, like the other houses have. It's part of the charm of Lebanon. But then the other things that the site plan likes, encourages people to do, requires people to do, is put in perimeter landscaping, put in landscaping for privacy to screen things like utility things. So there's a lot of rules to where the landscaping goes, and we've tried to comply with all of those rules. In addition, the staff can request semi-opaque and opaque landscaping areas, which they have done in this case. So maybe if I, I'll describe the, I don't have a marker to point or to point to this, but I'll kind of start from the bottom of the page and kind of describe what we have for landscaping. And then we will look at some sheets of trees so you see some of the plantings. Oh, thank you. We're talking about. So along Bank Street, we have an existing, on the right-hand side, we have an existing lovely maple tree, which we very much want to keep. And then there's a young maple tree also in front of 10 Bank Street. Currently, in front of 14 Bank Street, there is...
Sorry.
I'm sorry, Tim.
It's okay.
We're all suffering a bit from Zoom meetings, so I'm glad that Tim has the control because otherwise we might, we might have intrusions from my screen. So in front of 14 Bank Street, because there are a couple of young trees planted there, but because we're shifting the development a little bit, we're going to have to replant there. So we've chosen trees there that go along with the trees that are along Bank Street. So currently, there are some beautiful maples along Bank Street. There's some birches and some, there's apples trees in front of 18 Bank Street. Next door, there's a genko tree across the street at the Ava Gallery. We've chosen to go with maples here, and we've gone with a variety that will go scarlet red in the fall if the supplier is correct about that. And so it'll add to the beautiful color scape in the fall along the street. Then in back of, in back of 14 Bank Street, we put in some deciduous trees. The city requires that there be shading, a certain percentage of shading on parking areas. So we have placed those and chosen those trees so it provides more than the minimum of shading for the parking areas. That's to help with overheating of urban areas in summer times. It's also helping for the privacy of the tenants.
Sorry.
Privacy. Fortunately, it's just a ski shot, so it's okay. We've added a couple of evergreen trees there, perhaps a balsam tree. That will help with the privacy in the wintertime. It's also good to have a mix of trees so that if some of your trees catch a disease or get a bug infestation, you don't lose all your trees. That happened with downtown Lebanon beginning in the 1930s with the Dutch elm trees. So it's good in general, as the city regulations require, to mix your tree species up. So we've certainly done that here. Along to the left-hand side of the screen, on the left end of the large building of number eight, we have a few trees between the parking area and number eight, and those are to help with the shading of the pavement and to help screen the dumpster that's there and generally to soften the building a little bit. The large cluster of trees that's on the lot line is the opaque screening that the city staff asked us to add, and that's a mix of deciduous and evergreen trees. And some of them are at the lower level, some of them are on the upper level at the top of the parking ramp. So that includes dense evergreens like cedar and the balsam as well, and eastern hemlock as well as some of the oak trees. You're required to put in understory trees, so it's a mix of trees there. A very similar mix is on the other end of number eight, on the lot line between the post office, parking lot, and the end of the building. And so there's a mix there of some of, we hope to keep some of the existing trees that are along the lot line there if we can. It's always a little tricky with construction and lot lines, but we hope to keep some of those trees. And then we've added in deciduous and evergreen trees there. And again, the city staff require that to be their category called the opaque screening, which is not infinite. It's up to a certain height that it's required to be opaque. Along the south side of number eight, in the 15-foot, the required 15-foot landscape buffer, we have, what the city required was the semi-opaque screening there. I know in the last meeting, Ms. Monroe was asking why we had so many trees planted there, and that is because it was required by the city staff, that that be the semi-opaque screening. It's a mixture of our deciduous trees, so pin oak and some birch and maple and greenspire linden. But the pin oak and greenspire linden have both been very good performers at our other properties. We wanted to add some maple for the color, and it's, as I say, it's good to have a mix of species, the birch to reflect the birches nearby and because it's a nice, a nice tree for interest for the neighbors. The oak trees do have the advantage of holding their leaves for part of the winter, so that helps a little bit with privacy and noise when it's a dense neighborhood, as Green Street and Bank Street are. You want to have some, you want to have, to add to some of the natural lot line trees that build up over time. We've also got some understory plantings in there, which include shad bush, which you might know as service berry, that has kind of white, delicate white flowers in the springtime, and then it's kind of an innocuous light foliage the rest of the year. Then we have put in some witch hazel that has kind of a roundish leaf that goes gold in the fall. And what's lovely about witch hazel, it's a native, and it has yellow flowers in the fall, is very delicate little yellow flowers in October and sometimes in November. So that's a lovely understory tree. And I started out with some very pretty little sand cherries that I had out more towards, because I thought of them as ornamentals, more towards Bank Street. They have very pretty white flowers in the spring, and they have some burgundy foliage. But both Jolynn and the board felt that the little cherries might be a maintenance problem, so I relegated those back to the landscape buckford in the back where the neighbors will get to enjoy how pretty they are and they won't track into any of the properties on anyone's feet. And I think probably the birds might appreciate the little cherries as well. And I'm thinking that this landscape buffer will be rather an asset in terms of the small wildlife and the birds in the neighborhood may quite enjoy this area of planting. It's also going to give privacy to our tenants and help with the privacy between the buildings in the neighborhood. We did have to ask for waivers on the side lot lines between the library and number 10 and between number 18 and number 14, and that is because there were pre-existing driveways there, which we were reusing, one of which is a shared right-of-way with number 18. So we literally couldn't put a 15-foot landscape barrier there because we...
We would violate the right-of-way.
We would violate the right-of-way, so we couldn't put it there. We are widening the landscape strip that's next to the side of the library. We still have a driveway there, but we've inched it over. I hesitated to put any plant, many plantings there because of the snow plowing problem. The snow will get plowed along the driveway there, and I was worried that it might take out, if we had a lot of plantings along there, that might be a problem. We have put trees on the side lawn of number 10 between number 10 and the library for the residents of number 10 and for shading and to make a nice outdoor area for the tenants to enjoy in nice weather. And if maybe, Tim, you can go to the next slide? It's kind of a continuation of this one. Okay, so this is showing the landscaping, and it's showing some designated tenant areas. The site plan review requires that you provide recreational areas. However, it doesn't define what they are, which is, as some of our attendees know, it kind of opens things up to discussion because, you know, what do your tenants want? And I don't know, Jolynn, do you want to speak to what your tenants might like for recreation?
So what we've seen in our other projects for requests of outdoor use areas is that our tenants want somewhere to sit and eat, somewhere to sit and read or listen to headphones or whatever. Occasionally, they want to somewhere to sit outside and smoke, but we're hoping that that's not going to be too much of a use issue. But we have enough room in some of these yellow areas, both for seating, picnic tables, barbecue grills, the kind of outdoor recreational use that we have seen has been requested most often. If we get requests for other types of things, we certainly can accommodate them, but that's usually what we initially provide because that's what we've been asked for over the last decade or so. Want to go to the next slide?
So let's see, so our next slide would be in our next set here. So just checking, pardon me while I stare at my screen. I am nearsighted. So our next screen would be number, our next image, Tim, would be number eight, the Coburn Park Fall Colors. So I put in this, this is not our proposal. This is how beautiful Coburn Park looked last fall. I think that Lebanon's done an amazing job, since we don't have the beautiful elms anymore, with picking a mix of spectacular mix of trees. So we've got burgundy, we've got red, we've got some evergreen, we've got gold, we've got oaks, we've got maples. It's really quite a beautiful mix, and we certainly want to continue that mix. So this is kind of the inspiration I took for picking some of our trees. So if we can go to slide number nine. Okay, so this is, this is the trees we picked, and I apologize, these are just off the internet. I went for representative pictures of each one of these trees. So starting in the upper left, we have our deciduous trees. So the pin oak is rather a tall, thin tree, an oak tree. And then we have the greenspire linden, which is a little bit triangular in shape and is a very well-behaved tree. It's sometimes called basswood. It's a very familiar street tree. There are some trees that do better in the salty conditions near streets, and the linden is one of them. Then we have our beautiful maple. I believe that it's a scarlet flame. I'd have to check the cultivar again, but I wanted one with a really spectacular color, and I think some of the other projects in town that were being permitted picked this one. And so I decided that we would go with this particular cultivar. And then some white birches, and they're not, I haven't put them right along Bank Street. They're more in between the buildings and out back. The next set of trees are the evergreens, so we've gone with balsam, which makes a nice pyramid Christmas tree type of tree. They can be a very handsome, dense tree, very low maintenance, surprisingly, with beautiful smelling foliage that's not scratchy. Then we've got the hemlock, very familiar to many of you. Then we've got cedar tree. We had that under shrubs, and if you keep it trimmed, it stays a shrub. Otherwise, it can grow up and be larger and thick. And you see this quite a lot on commercial properties because they are a nice dense foliage that is relatively low maintenance. Then are those who may be less familiar with the term understory tree. That's the next set down on the left hand of the middle line. So you see the shad bush. They're called that because they flower when the shad fish are running in the streams in the springtime. That's why they're called the shad bush. They're, they had beautiful blooms this year. I'm sure many of you saw the shad bush around. They're called understores because they don't, they don't grow very tall. They like the shade, they go in the shade underneath the other trees, and they help kind of fill things in and add visual interest. And once the other trees grow up and are tall, these keep some privacy and some leaves down low. The middle one is the witch hazel. That's a lovely native tree that I described before. You're seeing it with its fall foliage, kind of gold. Then the next one is a sand cherry. It's showing its white flowers here. It's not a very big tree, and it has kind of burgundy leaves, which I thought would add some nice interest. I know you've got burgundy trees on the Coburn Park. Then the next three images are of our shrubs. We're counting the cedar as a shrub, but because that can grow large, I put it in the upper line. These are the ones that will stay smaller. So we have the PGM rhododendron, and this has quite small leaves. The leaves are maybe two to three, two inches. two inches long. We've had good luck with it in the rental properties. It holds its foliage in the wintertime, it's kind of a greenish burgundy foliage and it has purple flowers in the springtime. And again, it's a very hardy, nicely behaved. It's a cross, it's a hybrid between a native and a plant from outside the area, but it's a widely grown cultivar in this area. Then in the middle, we have the Miskim lilac, that's one that Jo Lynn has had very good luck with at her properties. It has a lilac, it's actually a Korean lilac and it has a nice purple lilac in the springtime and is fairly well behaved. I don't think it has as many problems with Downy mildew as the European lilacs do. We do like to have some flowers in the springtime. Then we have junipers, this is a variety of different junipers, the cultivar we picked is fairly low, it's kind of rough-topped, it doesn't require a lot of pruning, occasional maintenance. I discovered pruning some of Jo Lynn's properties last year, that the birds love juniper. I interrupted a lot of their nesting. And so we're using that for some of our plantings near the buildings and in our buffers as well. And juniper is another native. Then we wanted some ornamental flowers because we are along Bank Street, we wanted to honor Colby Benton's memory because he loved plants. His legacy to the city of Lebanon in his will was actually cemetery plantings, which I think are still there over in the School Street Cemetery. And he loved his garden there on Bank Street and it was rather a tourist attraction. And the one photo I have of it shows a lot of flower planting. So I thought along the front of number 14 Bank Street, we should have some flowers and along the sidewalks leading back to number eight, we should have some flowers. I chose daylily, which I know is not native, but it is fairly well behaved if it is kept in areas like this where it can't escape into the landscape if it's in between driveways and sidewalks and things. Some hosta, which likes shady areas, we will have some shady areas in the north sides of our buildings. And then some brightly colored hydrangeas. So that will be kind of the beginning of our landscaping and it's possible other ornamentals may get added, but that kind of, I wanted a nice mix of flowers that would be suitable for a residential setting like Bank Street. We have a lot to live up to along the street and we want to make it a handsome property. And let's see, and our next slide is number 10, Tim, if you can put the next one. This actually answers some questions that we heard last time at the meeting, which was where the bike parking is. They felt it wasn't really, someone felt that the bike parking wasn't called out very clearly on the site plans. And for those of you who are new to the site plan plans, they're very technical, not this one, but the ones that we have to submit to the city, they are very technical and hard to read. So we've been doing these diagrams to help people in these online hearings help to understand better what's going on because it is so challenging. So here I have highlighted in bright magenta our various bike parking locations because we do have three buildings, so we didn't want to have parking in just one spot. So for long-term wintertime parking, we do have a bike storage room off the garage. And there are a number of different bike storage racks that are available on the market and some of those were in our original submittal. So there's a room there where those can be stored. And then inside the garage, near one of the driveways, is a bike rack where you can hang your rack up on the wall, so it'll be out of the way. And then leave your bike inside and take the stairs up to your apartment so you don't have to carry the bike upstairs with you. We have some bike racks near the entrances to the two stairways into number eight, to number eight east and number eight west, and to number 10. So those are bike racks that'll fit about six bikes. So if you have a guest coming over that's biking over to join you or you want to leave your bike outside for a day or two, then you can leave your bike on the bike rack. And they're fairly attractive looking racks. And then, because that's a little bit far for the people that live in 14 to run back there and use those bike racks. And I put a couple bike lockups on the front porch and they're just kind of a little wall rack where you can hook your bike into it, just to a secure spot, just kind of on the corner of the porch there. I don't think anyone walking by would even notice that they're there, but they're a little way to keep your bike secure there. So those are our bike facilities for the recreational use of our tenants. And we hope that they're going to make great use of the Mascoma Greenway and the bike trail as it develops. And it's a really great facility and our tenants are going to be able to take advantage of that.
While we're on this one, there was a question at the last meeting about why we didn't have walkways and we were requiring people to walk down driveways. And so this is a simple enough diagram that it should be more clear here that there are sidewalks to all the buildings and that we're not expecting the tenants to use the driveways to get from building to building. So if you look to the right side of number 10, you can see a sidewalk that leaves from the Bank Street where the big, what kind of tree is that?
Maple tree.
The big maple tree already is, and it winds up and around 10 Bank Street and heads right back to 8 West. So that walkway is not along the driveway, but it is for pedestrians to get to 8 West. And then on the other side of number 10, the curved part of the driveway between 10 and 14 also has a sidewalk along the edge of the driveway that brings you between the two buildings and around. So I just wanted to point that out because I think there was a question about where those sidewalks were, and this is a good diagram to show where those are located.
Okay, our next slide is the number 12. So we did have a question last time about environmentalism and solar issues. So one of the main things you can do when you're picking a site or building a building is not building out in the middle of nowhere. One of the best environmental moves is to put your project, whatever the project is, where there's already infrastructure, where there's sewer and water and streets and power, so that you're not having to put all those things in and you're hooking into existing systems. That's one of the best things you can do environmentally. Another good move is to, if you've got a good building that's in great shape, as number 10 is, then you keep that building. Unfortunately, the current number 14 was not in very good shape and we didn't feel that it could be kept either because of the location or because of the condition it was in. And then another good move for environmentalism is to group your housing together. I love single-family housing, there's a lot of beautiful single-family houses, but it's much more environmentally sound to group your living together. So we have five units in number 10, we have six units in number 14, and then we have quite a lot of units in number eight, just as the people along Green Street have done over the years. They started out as single-family houses, they've added units over time. That's a very good environmental move to do that, to make your downtowns more dense as you go along. So we feel we're following the general trend that Lebanon is encouraging to have more housing downtown, where the services are and where people can, if they have a job downtown, they can just walk to their job or they can take the advanced transit, as many people do to jobs in Hanover or jobs at the hospital. That's one of the reasons we like this site for housing, because you can take the bus to work and leave your car or even just live without a car, as some of the tenants do, or bike to work. So it's a good environmental move to be on those infrastructure routes. And then in terms of, well, and we're south-facing. I was digressing by thinking about walking and how great it is to walk to the amenities downtown, and I got myself distracted from environmentalism, but we're talking about the environmentalism. So on this particular diagram, I'm showing solar opportunities. So I'm showing the shading, I'm showing the December midday shade, and as you are aware that the sun gets lower in the wintertime. And I chose December just to kind of as an illustration. So this is the day you'd want solar gain the most, the midday in December, you'd want solar gain. So number 10, our old-style house, doesn't have really good solar access. You could put a couple panels up on the little bit of south-facing roof, but the general geometry of the roof doesn't lend itself very well to solar panels. Number 14, the orientation that worked to make the building look good along Bank Street also worked beautifully for putting on solar panels. So the backside of the roof, it's a gable roof, can have solar panels, they won't be visible from Bank Street. That's one of the reasons we didn't put a gable on the back of the roof. We have a little porch to protect the door, but we've left the roof very simple there so that as budget and time allows, that solar panels become an option there. Then on number eight, we started out, as many of you know, with a gable roof facing south, that great solar orientation. We now have a flat roof and there is great opportunities for solar up top. And I know some of the people were worried that, were worried about the shading of the building affecting the adjacent properties. And that's one of the things I like about this property is because where there's space to put a building, we're not shading the neighbors by and large. As the sun swings around, of course, we're going to, early and late in the day, we will shade the backside of the library a little bit, we will shade the parking lot of the law office next door a little bit, we will be shading Bank Street, as the buildings do now, the sidewalk on Bank Street. Our shorter buildings are towards Bank Street and Ava Gallery. The shadow from the large building is mainly on its own property, we're not shading the, in this time of day when you want solar gain, we're not shading Green Street. So it's a real advantage to this property that a lot of in-town properties don't have, is just that it has a good solar orientation, it's facing south, the long way, the right way around. And so that's why we wanted to put in this slide about the solar, because we did have questions. And Jo Lynn, do you want to talk about style of building at this point in the project?
Yeah, there's a number of things that we wanted to try and address from some of the comments that we've heard so far and the letters that we've gotten. And we appreciate the feedback and are trying to respond to that feedback appropriately. So a lot of the feedback was interesting, that we got positive feedback on the 14 Bank Street architectural style and...
And Tim, to maybe just go to the one that's the pretty picture, no, number 30, the Bank Street civil diagrams? You've seen this before, it's a perspective, yeah, that one. Thank you, Tim.
So I think the concern was that the building out back, that's the larger building, was too modern-looking. And so taking direction from the style of the front building in this picture, the beige building in this picture, Sue has done some renderings of what the larger building would look like in an Italianate style. And those are the ones that Tim was just about to bring up. And if he could go back to those, what ones were those, number?
Yeah, okay. So I apologize, these are the beautiful renderings our professional renderer from Burlington did in the perspectives. And we were having a little technical difficulty this afternoon, so it's a sketch. But we wanted to show you kind of how we can adjust the look of the building to fit in with the Italianate style that's so prevalent along Green Street and Bank Street. That's because they were largely built at the same time when this style was popular. Number 10 is a version of Italianate style, as is the Carter Mansion across the street, they're matching buildings. And in this particular case, what we wanted to do was put the Italianate cornice along the top of the building. And we put in some vertical box bays, which is very much in the Italianate style. They're very shallow, but they do help break up the roofline and they also, the shape, and they also help a little bit, I think, to let you know where people live. So each of these apartments, the two-bedroom apartments, they each will, if you look on, say, the upper left-hand corner, each of those small, the windows that aren't in the box bay are a bedroom window. Then the window in the box bay, that's the living room window. So that's a couple that has just joined the neighborhood and we hope that you welcome them to the neighborhood and that they be, you might see volunteering for some of your great activities. They're going to be customers for the businesses downtown. We're seeing these people as people that are going to join your neighborhood in a way that the housing up on Hita Road, where there's going to be 300 and 400 units, those people aren't going to be joining the activities downtown so much. We want to see these folks to be part of your community. And we want it to look residential. So we heard you when you thought that we were being a little too bland and a little bit too modern with our other building. It's always a hard line when you're putting a new building in to make it fit in the neighborhood. So we've been listening. And, Tim, you can show the other two in either order. So these are rather preliminary, so we've been playing around a little bit with the massing to break it up. This one is definitely sketchy at this point. And this would be back behind number 10 and number 14. So this is kind of the courtyard view of this building, and I didn't have time to get all the pretty colors on it, time ran out of it this afternoon.
But realistically speaking, I can't think of a place you could stand where you could see all of this at once because there's other buildings and trees and things in front of it that would obscure anybody's view of the building to be able to ever see it all at one shot. But the purpose here was to make sure that things were sufficiently broken up so that we had, as Sue was saying, 10 Bank Street has five units, 14 Bank Street has six units, eight, I don't know whether it's east or west, one of them has 11 units and the other one has 10 units. So we've really tried to break down the scale so that we have four buildings that really don't have a whole lot of units in each one. And the only thing that makes 8 Bank Street look like one big, long building is that the parking garage is all connected. But can you go back to the one we were on before, please? Yeah, so the part that's kind of obscured by the buildings on Green Street sort of hides the part of the building that has the parking garage in it and has the connection to it. And otherwise, the two, 8 West and 8 East, we're trying to treat as two separate buildings and treat them with the same architectural flavor, but they're going to have different coloring and things to really make them pop as separate buildings on each side. Can we also see the end picture? So this is the side of the, the end of the building, and then that's 10 Bank Street, the existing building that we want to keep. And that's just showing how they're pretty close together, so it would be hard to be standing there and seeing the whole thing at once because 10 Bank Street is right in front of it. In terms of other questions that had come up, just briefly...
Oh, actually, can I just interrupt for a moment? Because Jo Lynn, juggling all the changes of housing in Upper Valley in the last couple of months, she, if you can look back, Tim, at number 17. So I had mentioned this to her, but she asked me to put a notch in the middle of the building. So we have, since the project started, we've actually cut out seven rental units since we started. We started with 47, we now have 40 rental units. And one of the things that Jo Lynn did, had me do... And one of the things that Jo Lynn did, had me do to the design, was cut a notch in the, in the middle of the building. So when you, when, when all of you saw this building in the perspective, the one that was too modern, that notch on the side facing Green Street, we'd cut down, we'd cut out two units, the notch was two units high. And what I've done here is actually, and this is very preliminary. So Jo Lynn still may say that she, she doesn't like this, or the neighbors may say they don't like this. But what I've done is move one of the apartments that was on the south side to the north side. So the notch here is now three stories tall. So there aren't any apartments in the middle on this side. And the, the part in the middle, it's very hard to make this really show in, in elevation, the kind of corridor in the middle, it's only seven feet wide, it's right in the middle of the building. And you will be able to see some sky through it in the middle. But it, it will, from this side, it will look much more like separated buildings. To do that, I had to make the north side facing, facing the other houses on the lot look less divided, but I thought the Green Street neighbors might appreciate a more, you know, more lightness there. Now, Jo Lynn, now that I interrupted you, you may continue.
That's fine. So there were some questions. I guess Dwayne is, is on the call or will be on the call, but he's provided a letter with respect to this project and another project about needing to drive a fire truck around the building. So I'll leave that for, for him to discuss. There were some questions about traffic. And we've obtained an additional traffic study letter that Tim Corwin has that has an analysis that Kathy Romano had pointed out that she was concerned that we were considering the rooming house as too many units in our calculation for the traffic. So I went ahead and, and had him redo the, the traffic study with the five units that are at 10 Bank Street and the three apartments and the rooming house, and the rooming house only being counted as one. So that would be four units over at 14 Bank Street currently, which would mean nine existing units. So with nine existing units, the additional traffic generated between the existing units and the proposed units, that's the old letter, that's not the new one that came today. The, the new letter that came today has existing as nine. Yeah, that one. So he redid the calculation and he says that the, the increase is 20 PM peak hour trips. He also said that you need an increase of at least 100 PM peak hour trips to trigger a traffic study. And so 19 PM peak hour trips of increase, in his opinion, was in the, in the noise and was not significant enough to, to, to make this project really have any significant impact on the traffic on, on Bank Street. So that was the, the letter that, that he provided. So I wanted to address the, the traffic. And that's like the worst-case scenario if we count the, the rooming house as, as one unit. There were some people that had talked about architectural character, which I believe we just tried to address. We talked about landscaping. I guess the, the Central Business District, which this is in, basically says you can have 100% lot coverage. And there are some buildings in the Central Business District that do have 100% lot coverage and don't have any side buffers and don't have any parking and don't have any of those things. So we're, we're trying to respect all of the site plan regulations within, within that as well as the zoning regulations that dictate things like height. So we're still following those rules. In terms of, let's see, we talked about parking. Oh, there were some other questions about lighting. Somebody suggested that somewhere we had seven-foot candles, but I, we looked at the plan and we don't really see where we have more than two and a half or three anywhere.
Do you want us to put up the lighting diagram up?
I don't think we need to put it up. I think we just need to address that, that there is a lighting diagram that, that pretty clearly shows that we don't have that much light anywhere. And what else? I guess a few people, somebody asked about balconies, but we don't, we've never had a, a rendering of this building that has balconies because we don't usually design them into our buildings. So whoever was worried about noise from balconies can rest assured that that's not going to be a problem. What else? I'm sure I'm missing someone and I apologize that I, I'm not answering everybody's question, but I'm, I'm trying to hit the, the notes that I took from the last time. So traffic, parking, stormwater, I believe whatever stormwater questions were outstanding have been answered. And Brian Vincent has confirmed that he doesn't have any more questions, but we'll let him weigh in on that as well. Are there any more things that we hadn't answered?
Oh, they may have been from the letters in the agenda today, but I think, I think we're, we're open for questions from the, when, when the chair opens the questions up, we'll happen to answer.
Okay.
All right, thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
So here is the agenda that we're going to try to stay with over the next little while. I'm going to ask staff to make any comments in regard to this presentation. I will then open it up to board members to ask questions, but only those questions that are pertinent to what we've heard this evening. Then we'll ask the city engineer to give his update as documented in the staff memo. And once we're through with that, I'm going to open up to the public. And then we'll see how many questions, comments we have from the public and where that takes us in terms of the finding this evening. So that's a pretty ambitious agenda. Tim, can I pass this back to you for comments?
Thanks, Mr. I, I don't know that I have any new comments for this evening.
All right, fine. So board members, people that have questions about what we heard this evening. I can't see hands, so I'm giving people time.
Joan has her hand up, and then I, I have some questions as well.
All right, so I'll start with Joan, if that's all right, Kathy?
That's fine, that's fine.
So Joan Monroe?
Hi, Monroe here. I was one person who was concerned about the number of trees in the back along the southern side. And I'm glad that you've put in a variety of trees, but I do believe there are definitely going to be problems. The first one is the types of the trees. Some of these trees get really huge and very wide. And so having 15 feet on the ground is kind of only the size that the roots will need. And the top of the tree will go out many feet farther than, than that. So a lot of these trees are going to end up literally growing against the building and will need to be trimmed. And a lot of these trees won't like that kind of extreme pruning. And also, the, the problems with the trees in the south is that we've also been told, and we also got another diagram for our packet tonight, that is saying that along the back, that 15 feet along the back of, of the large building is supposed to have swale and pipe to collect excess surface water. And then in this note, and I'm reading off of, off of the, the diagram we received, and then it says, "No special plantings." And I'm, I, I find this completely contradictory that there's going to be piping, there's going to be gardens there, but then you're going to be having, I mean, I don't, you know what I mean? I mean rain gardens, not flower gardens. They give me rain gardens or, or the soil expected to absorb moisture, but you're going to have, like, it's going to be so many, so many roots above it. I, as a gardener, a very longtime gardener, and having some really awesomely big red maple trees that you can't even reach your arms around in our yard, I just, I, I just, I think this is all fantasy. And so that, that's one thing. And I look forward to hearing Mr. Vincent's response about the water and the drainage. That was, he has many questions related to that in the, so I look forward to his presentation.
Can I, can I answer one thing? So when, when he says, "No special plantings," what he's saying is, it's not a rain garden and he's not requiring any kind of special plants to be there. He just has an extra pipe to help with drainage. And he did tell us that he doesn't expect that pipe will interfere in any way with whatever we want to plant in that area, that we can, we can plant however we wish. So that was the engineer's design intent, and that's what the note refers to.
And I guess I would say that unless this was a landscape architect or an arborist or someone with that kind of knowledge, I'm sorry, I, I, I have to disagree based partly on my own knowledge of, of gardening in the same location for over 30 years and, and what I've learned by reading, it is one of my passions.
All right, thank you for that, Joan. Kathy?
Yes, I guess what I want to refer to, I have two or three ideas that I'd like to discuss. The first is the overwhelming response we've gotten from the public with regard to this project and almost entirely opposed to certain aspects of it. Some of it with regard to the height, some of it with regard to the size. When it was first presented, I know the applicant said, "This is in keeping with the historic character of the neighborhood because a lot of houses in the early to mid-19th century had attached barns on the back." And this, and Lebanon is famous for having all of its mills. And Lebanon did have a lot of mills, but they did not dominate the skyline because they were placed along the river and some of them are still there. And they did not dominate this, the, overwhelm the, you couldn't see them when you were looking over the buildings in the city. And the barns that were attached to the, some of the larger homes over the years either got torn down or converted to garages or additional living units, but they were essentially maybe a quarter to, maybe not even half the size of the residential building they were attached to. So if you took the two properties at 10 and 14 Bank Street, which are going to have 11 units in them as proposed, and you were to add something like the barns that used to be attached, that would give you something like an additional six units. And we are seeing something like, what is it, 30? 29 maybe units in the back building instead of something like six? So it's, it, I don't know if Tim can bring up page 63 from the packet we got for today? Tim, are you able to do that?
Yes, hold on.
I think it's the drainage picture, but it shows the, the footprint of the buildings. While you're doing that, okay. So there you kind of see in miniature the existing dwelling, the proposed dwelling, and then the enormous, enormous, overwhelming. And you don't even see the height of that apartment building in the back. So what's out of character with the neighborhood is the size, both the height and just the footprint of that proposed apartment building. It's an excellent site for creating more infill residential units. It's just not that many. And I'm very concerned about what it's doing to the properties it backs up to on Green Street because some of those are two-story properties, some of them are two and a half, but none of them is four and a half. So there's just going to be these giant properties with windows looking into their windows and looking down on them. It changes the character of that Green Street neighborhood completely. This is more of a bridge site. It, it was, when the application was submitted, part of the Central Business District. But it comes from the residential side. It is not where City Hall is or where the Citizens Bank Building is, where you don't have a, a yard around them. It's sort of midway. So rather than overshadowing the library and the post office and all of the housing in the area, it would just be much better if it were lower and not, and didn't cover so much ground. And then my additional concern is traffic. I would like to see an additional traffic study, and we do have the ability to ask for that, even if it doesn't trigger that peak traffic, 100 vehicles an hour. And my concern is this, Route 4 is Bank Street. It is a commuter route into and out of Lebanon. And traffic does kind of zip around the library corner there. And now you've got three driveways, two of them, it looks like two of them as exits, that are so close to that corner and they have to get over, most of them will be turning left, so they'll have to get over into that west direction of Bank Street. It seems like it's an accident waiting to happen. There's no stop signs, there's no stop lights, there's no traffic mitigation efforts in that area. A lower number of proposed apartments would make that less of a concern. But those left, those numerous left turns right now are a major concern to me.
All right, thank you, Kathy. I think at this point, unless, is there anyone else from the board that would like to make a comment at this point? So I'd like to open this up to the public.
Chair Garland, Monroe, Monroe here.
Yes, Joan.
I also have the same exact thinking as Kathy does about the closeness to the, the corner. And the corner is really not your standard, you know, 90-degree angle four-way intersection. And so I also would like to have a, a traffic study done for that reason, that it's actually a roundabout. It's sort of an, an old-fashioned roundabout where it's going one way around a park, going, you know, around a, a city park, Central, Central Park. And it's, because it's not just about the number of cars, it's about how traffic moves around that roundabout. And then what it does, once, the thinking is, okay, I'm done with the roundabout, so now I can go, go, you know, I can accelerate because now it's a nice, wide, flat street and I'm, I can, I'm real close to wherever it is I want to go, whether it's in a budding town or to get on the interstate. So I would also like to have a, a traffic consultant, a professional consultant who will address that. And not the least of which is how busy that area is with pedestrians and children. Many, many people do their post office and library stops at once. There are kids that are going there, kids from the neighborhood that walk there and go to the, to the library. The coffee shop across the street is also bringing in more walkers. So I, I also feel that we should, really should have a, a traffic consultant weigh in on this. And all, I mean, considering the number of, of entrances and exits, you know, And all, I mean, considering the number of, of entrances and exits, you know, the curb cuts, and then the likely directions that the new people will travel and how they'll, I mean, for people traveling left, that they don't have much time before they get into that, they get into that old-fashioned roundabout. I have other questions as well, Chair. I don't know whether you want me to continue with them?
I would, I would like, Joan, if we could, to give the maximum amount of time to the public. We only had half an hour last time.
Okay.
That's all right.
That's okay. This is Laurel.
Laurel, yes.
I feel that the building, the two buildings in the back are completely out of character with the neighborhood. There's language in the regulations about being harmonious with the character of the neighborhood. I don't see any, I don't see any way in which these buildings are harmonious at all. I appreciate the applicant's trying to make slight changes in the facades of the building or in the shapes of the buildings, but, I mean, really, it's just enormous, and it's out of character with the neighborhood.
Mr. Chair?
Who's that?
And this is, this is Matt Hall.
Oh, Matt, sorry, didn't recognize you.
No problem. Just a brief comment, I guess, since we're getting into the design and the lot and everything. I, you know, I think, I would just offer my perspective, which is that I think, you know, the planning board is here to go over the regulations that it's written, the city regulations, the master plan that the planning board develops. And the master plan wants these kind of developments downtown, at least as it's written right now. And I think that the regulations, as they're written right now, with the exception, as staff have pointed out, with the exception of the waivers that we need to kind of go over, this project, you know, as we're seeing it right now, pretty much meets regulations. And so I think that, you know, just, just as, you know, my comment would be that we have a very circumscribed role, and I think it's just important to bear that in mind. Thanks.
Thank you, Matt. So I would like, I will, yes, hang on a second, hang on a second, hang on a second. Still trying to get to the public because after the public, I want to get to those four waivers. And then the comments that we've just heard are the type of comments that will come up in our deliberations once we're past the waivers. So I'm hopeful of giving priority right now to the public.
I'd like to respond to Mr. Hall's comment, though.
All right, go ahead.
On, on page five of the staff memorandum, it cites section six of the design and construction requirements, the last sentence of which, "The overall intensity of site development shall be harmonious with the municipality, the neighborhood, and adjacent properties." I don't see how this meets any of those standards.
All right. Thank you for that. So what I do want to do right now is ask Brian Vincent, the city engineer, to walk us through the various points that are in the staff memorandum for tonight's meeting and give us an update as to the status of all of the stormwater and other issues.
This is Brian. Can everybody hear me?
I can, Brian. Maybe a little bit louder if you can.
Okay, will do. So yes, I had several comments, many of which were focused on stormwater management and treatment. There were a couple of comments just relative to plan and presentation on the plan, some clarification on details, et cetera. Those have been addressed. As far as the stormwater goes, I do have a question about, and Ms. Monroe brought this up, the compatibility of the proposed landscaping on the south side of Eight Bank and the proposed drainage system, like we call them rain gardens, but it's really just piping. And I would, I would say that those structures would have to be compatible with any proposed landscaping. And it may be just a matter of how they're spaced and how their roots grow. And I think that can be managed, but it may be a little, there had to be some thought put into that to make sure it's, they are compatible and they're going to coexist properly. And also, the stormwater management system in that area will have to be maintained so that they always drain as intended. And the applicant does have a stormwater operation and maintenance plan, so is, and that should be addressed in that document and, and held to it as a regular maintenance item, usually twice a year. The other comments had a lot to do with the existing water table and what we call the estimated seasonal high water table at the site. The applicant has provided, you know, a professional report that details that request that I had made. And it turns out their estimate of the water table is nine point five feet below ground surface. The infiltration systems they're proposing are above that by between two and four feet, which meets the design intent of our, of our regulations. I think that's, that's fine. And that was one of the largest questions I had had for, for at least a couple of months now, and that's been addressed. There was a question put forth by the library that was, had to do with, I think, and I have to paraphrase a little bit, had to do with infiltration and how that's going to affect their foundation. The applicant may want to touch on that. My understanding is that the stormwater that's infiltrated into the ground will percolate essentially vertically, so it would be a little bit of groundwater mounding, but not a lot. And that should be fine, but I would ask the applicant's engineer to maybe comment on that question. Other than that, I think I'm good with, I've been, all of my comments have been addressed in the most recent round that you see in your packet.
So Brian, just to sum up, if I understood correctly, that I don't think that we're going to complete our review tonight. We've got an hour left, and we haven't begun to hear from the public. So I'm going to ask that you carry forward with the applicant the question of the rain gardens and the rest for the next meeting.
Okay.
If you would, and then I'll turn to the applicant and ask if you would like to address Brian's points this evening or carry them forward to our next meeting.
Dan, do you want to, do you want to address Brian's concern right now, or?
Sure. The drainage out back, they're
Sorry, Dan, Dan, Dan. Sorry, just introduce yourself for everyone.
I'm Dan Nash. I represent the applicant. I'm the civil engineer. The drainage out back, the areas are extremely small. The pipes that have been put in there are just supplemental drainage in case the soil is tight or the leaves hamper infiltration, so it's just to add a little extra drainage. The pipes are only ten feet long horizontally as they're laid on the ground, so it will not interfere with any of the plantings. You can plant anything back there that's appropriate for the site, for them to be planted. All that drainage is is supplemental drainage. Over by the library, we've got ten feet to the groundwater table. We've got very pervious soils, and I see no impact whatsoever to the library's foundation.
All right. I'm going to suggest, rather than trying to resolve those, that the two of you continue that discussion and then report back at the next meeting. With that, I am going to open this up to the public. Now, I ask your indulgence. It's very hard to manage this when I can't see who is interested. I know we had a lot of participation in the half hour that was allotted last time. I'm going to allow as much time as we have this evening. I would ask two things. One, if you spoke at the last meeting, please don't speak again. And if you have submitted a written comment, that is already part of the record. So if you wish to speak, I would ask that you address issues that you didn't address in your written comments. And with that, and I'm going to give people as much time as I possibly can. I know it's difficult unmuting. Again, if you're on the Teams software, it's the unmute button that you click on. If you're telephoning in, it's star six. And with that, I will ask who from the public wishes to speak.
Hello, this is Doreen Schweizer. Can you hear me?
Yes, Doreen.
Great. Thank you. I did speak last time, but I'm taking the right to do it again because I'm the back of butter. And I have something that I haven't said yet in either of the two letters that I wrote that came up tonight.
Fair enough.
What, what my other letters have been about have been related to the setback. One is fire. That's the big one for me, and I wrote a letter that I hope you'll all look at. So I have concerns about the closeness of the buildings. And my barn is six feet from the property, so I own a house that was built in eighteen sixty-two. It doesn't, it didn't have to abide by any setback rules. So I'm, I'm in residential, they're in central business. Their setback is either fifteen or twenty feet. I don't understand either one, which one it is. I understand it, but I'm not sure which one it is. But my barn is six feet from the property edge. The house next door, which currently has, it is, my barn is not residential, but the house next door has a building that is probably five feet from the property line, if not less. And it currently has two families in it with nine kids in between those two families. It's being sold to Visions for Housing. It's going to, it's going to have, in the back house, I'm aware of this, people who are cognitively handicapped enough to need twenty-four-hour care. So I just want to say that in relation to the setback in relation to fire, but also the setback, when I was listening to Joan, I'm also a gardener for a really long time, and those trees that are, everybody was talking about being so beautiful, they are. They're going to be growing towards the south. So when, when Joan, I think, talked about their abutting, Jolene's building, they're more likely to abut and have, be a problem with my barn and with the house next door because they're going to be growing towards the south. So that's one concern from tonight. I also, nobody's mentioning the fact that there's seventy-seven cars in the building, and I'm just going to put that out again in case of fire, you know, maybe the people will get out and the cars won't, and they'll all explode. But the other thing I just wanted to say in tonight, and then I'll get off. What Kathy was saying about this very important point, I think it's such an important point, when she called it a bridge area. This is where residential is meeting, not resident, this is where central business is not meeting central business, it's meeting residential. And they are all housed from the eighteen sixties, they're all wooden. I totally agree with what you guys were saying, Kathy and Joan, about it being inappropriate. I'm all for density housing. When I first heard about the project, my backyard, I was okay with it. But when I realized the scale of it, I'm not okay with it, and the proper, the trees. So I'm encouraging, of course, for it to be turned down and something else submitted. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Who else from the public wishes to speak?
Hello, my name is Amy Driscoll. May I take a turn?
Yes, please, Amy.
Hi, so I live on Shaw Street, and so this is my neighborhood. And I want to acknowledge the work that the developer has gone through to think of environmental concerns and so forth. All that given, I think this would be a beautiful development somewhere else in Lebanon. These, as we saw from the street view drawings, these buildings completely loom over the buildings on Bank Street, as they will the library and the post office. They are completely disproportionate to the rest of the neighborhood. While I understand what the, one of the council members said, I believe his name was Matt, that this is part of our larger master plan, it would be a great addition to the master plan on the other side of the green. Being on Shaw Street, walking in the neighborhood, being part of the neighborhood, these buildings would dominate the skyscape from Kimball Street, Union Street, Elm Street. You would not be able to escape them, and they just don't fit architecturally. I'm also very concerned about precedent. There, as I'm looking out my window here, there are pockets of land within some of these blocks that are quite large. And I don't see anything to stop someone looking at one of the houses in this area on Shaw Street or on Kimball Street, saying they're not in good condition, knocking it down and building a very high building that doesn't fit. This is a bridge community, but it is a residential community. This is where families are coming to still participate in some of that small-town feel, and I feel that these buildings would absolutely ruin that experience. So I appreciate the efforts of the developer, but I am speaking very much against this development. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Amy. Who else in the public?
Yes, Paul Bundy, I am speaking from the family homestead.
Registering, Frank.
We can, we can see you and hear you, Paul.
All right, brilliant. So I'm going to start out to quote Stuart Brand, who wrote the rather good book, How Buildings Learn. Old buildings, like forests, are praised as intergenerational equity. According to the building inspector, reading the submissions, Benton House, it was deemed unrestorable, which is a fairly vague irritating term like tax shelter and elderly. Whatever the case, I can pick out any number of houses that were deemed unrestorable or even condemned and have been completely restored. Sixteen hundred Pennsylvania Avenue in Washington, DC comes to mind. According to sources, the unrestorable aspect of Benton House is a cracked carrier beam, which is a relatively simple, albeit difficult repair. It's a simple repair, but it is not easy to carry out, but it can be done. We're not against progress, we are against wanton destruction. Benton House is an example, it's an excellent example of mid-nineteenth-century village center architecture in New England. It's, it was the home, it was built by a prominent businessman, Colby Benton, who was an explorer, who, who was, he was one of the first people to document contact with the Potawatomi tribes of the plains in the Midwest. He canoed down the Mississippi River solo in the mid-nineteenth century. He was a gentleman scientist. He held a commission as a colonel in the Vermont militia during the Civil War. Yet his home has since fallen into disrepair, but it still retains a striking appearance. Cost of building a new multifamily structure runs anywhere between one hundred twenty-five and two hundred dollars per square foot. The cost of renovating any structure runs between twenty dollars and one hundred fifty dollars per square foot. Now, to me, this seems to be great savings monetarily and historically. From a bioscience point of view, it is better to restore. Why fill up a landfill when you can preserve a piece of history, even if it's not your own? Yes, the massing for the building to replace number fourteen appears to be the same, but there's something about scale and proportion which this proposed structure lacks greatly. It, yes, they claim, they, yes, supposedly it is Italianate in style, but there's a very apparent lack of understanding with how Italianate, Victorian and Italianate architecture works, how the proportions and the scale are meant to be cohesive with the landscape, with the neighborhood, with the people living in the house. Now, it would be beneath me to dictate what others would do, should do with their own personal or private property. But according to the Los Angeles Planning Board, historic preservation no more infringes upon the citizens' rights than any other rule or guideline that Americans have long, long accepted de facto for, for development. We stand for the beautification and revitalization of this town, and the destruction of Benton House and the indirect, the indirect, I really lost words, but the indirect destruction of Carter Hazen in the process flies in direct opposition to these values and desires. Now, the greatest, now, Jalen Salazar Kish and her team mentioned how they wished to honor the history of Colby Benton with the plantings. Now, personally, and I believe I do speak for many here, the greatest honor, the only honor to the memory of Colby Benton would be the preservation and sympathetic restoration and conversion of the home he and his wife built as the only remaining vestige of his famed gardens. as the only remaining vestige of his famed gardens.
Thank you for that. Do we have from the public?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, uh, this is Mary Ann Mastro, and I'm here with my husband Frank.
Welcome.
Okay, uh, we live at fifteen Green Street, one of several single family homes.
Great.
On Green Street. Um, no, I'm not going to speak for one hour on horticulture, architecture, or environment, or sociological issues. However, I will get to reality. I, we have several concerns with the Jol- Jolene Salazar Keesh project. A major problem is the issue of waivers. Waivers have been requested as to lighting, landscaping, and fire engine access. Because of the size of the parcel owned by Keesh and because of the size of the development proposed and defined by Keesh, there is inadequate space for landscaping. For some reason, it is assumed the city should grant this waiver so the developer may maximize the density of the apartments, which of itself would seriously detract from the historic sense of the downtown neighborhood. The necessity for this waiver request is self-imposed and need not be granted. As to fire equipment access, the zoning ordinance, section six five B five states that minimum access requirements shall include a fifty-foot turning radius and twenty-two-foot ra- fire lanes at the rear of the buildings. Duane Egner, Fire Inspector of the Lebanon Fire Department, does not object, and to quote his rationale, this property, as currently proposed, does not have the required twenty-two feet between the rear of the building and the property line. As such, it does not appear to be possible to install this road without significant change to the site plan, which most likely would result in reduced units and disruptions to adjacent property owners. Given the current lot size, it is also unlikely that the required radius could be provided. So the waiver was requested because of the lot size and density of the apartments. And so the fire inspector had no objection to the waiver because of the lot size and density of the apartment units. The numbers of these units has been self-imposed by the owner developer and should be opposed. Not only does this make no sense, but no consideration is given to any of the older wooden structures owned by the adjacent property owners behind the property line, which might need access for fire equipment. This project should be rejected for this and so many other reasons. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Frank, can I just continue with the four points?
Uh, yes, please keep in mind that we have other people.
This will be quick. Um, I was looking at where they're going to sto- uh, put the snow, uh, in the winter. And they got one designated area, but the other two areas, and there's no other areas designated for the other two driveways. Uh, I think that needs to be concerned. Uh, the buffer zone on the south side is, I have to ask the developer, how do you buffer a five-story building? I've got a tree in my yard that's up about five stories, but it took forty years. And it's so big that it's starting to touch my house and the next door neighbor. Um, there's, uh, just the one last thing. All that you think, talk about water and getting your drainage and stuff isn't worth a tinker's dam when the ground is frozen. When the ground freezes and the snow starts to melt, you could put in all the drainage you want. It's not going to get there. It's going to come down and spill out onto Bank Street, making another icy spot, and there are several of them along Bank Street. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Appreciate it. Other people from the public?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
This is Robin Carpenter. As you know, I have spoken at previous meetings, but I would warn against presuming that anybody who's spoken before has nothing but the same old thing to say again. In this case, I want to just comment on some of the remarks that were made, uh, last meeting. In particular, the opening, opening of the meeting, so implying that Superior Court and Supreme Court rulings have made issues of master plan or purposes of the, uh, site plan regulations irrelevant to the planning board. I don't believe that's true. I don't believe that would be sustained in the end. I note that in a summary of the, of that, uh, Hanover meeting, uh, Hanover decision, which was cited as showing that we could never prevail on such grounds, that that case was argued at the Supreme Court only by abutting landowners, not by the plaintiff. And the trustees of Dartmouth College suggested that the master plan doesn't matter. This applicant isn't Dartmouth. Lebanon isn't Hanover. And I submit that the city of Lebanon is likely to actually defend the planning board in its decisions if they're well wrought, rather than let, leave it up to abutters to argue the case. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, can I speak?
Yes, please.
Uh, this is Linda Armstrong. I, I live at four Green Street. My husband, George, is here as well. He spoke at the last meeting, but I didn't. Uh, our backyard go, will be running exactly parallel to the number eight as proposed. Our backyard adjoins the post office and the library, so we're, we'll be very close. Um, and I was thinking about two things. I was thinking about the fact that Lebanon, I think, taxes people on, on their view. And I, if, if that's really the case, I think our taxes should go down because when we look out our, our backyard from uh, once this thing is built, all we're going to see is a wall. We'll just see a wall for the entire width of our backyard. And the other concern that I have is about all the, the lighting that's bound to be there from all these units. And I assume that they will have, uh, they have to have the parking garage lit probably twenty-four hours a, or a day, or at least all night for safety reasons. And that, so there will be a, a constant stream of light coming into our backyard from this, um, development. So I am very much opposed to, to seeing it go up. Uh, thank you.
Thank you very much. Who else do we have?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Thank you for recognizing me. I am Jim Phillyano. I'm here with my wife Kathy. I've got some numbers or to discuss regarding our opposition to this unsightly overbuilt because it violates basic principles of harmonious development embedded in Lebanon city ordinances and guidelines. The planning board is at a crossroads that will determine the ambience of Lebanon for generations to come. And that will, in turn, determine how much Lebanon will attract residents, businesses, community recreation, public entertainment, and community green spaces. The public must be informed that this overbuild has a larger footprint than City Hall, a larger footprint than Roger's House, a larger footprint than the Ava Gallery. Wise city planners of other communities take steps to maintain amiable historic centers to make their communities a magnet. Whether you think of Strawberry Bank in Portsmouth, New Hampshire, Greenwich Village, New York, Santa Barbara, California, Williamsburg, Virginia, or Old Quebec. The historic planners kept a commitment to maintain the historic beauty that brings people to the town. I am informed by the Historic Society that the current building at Benton House, uh, has a New Hampshire historic designation. And that space and the, by the, the adjacent building, Ms. Cole's offices, there was a community garden that has been discussed here already, and a pond. Ms. Reed called it a tourist attraction. That's precisely the point, as being a magnet. Photos from these sites are available at the Lebanon Historic Society, and we can send them if needed. The planners of the past, however, decided to ignore that beauty, which much diminished the charm of the historic center. Now we are faced with another assault on Lebanon's historic charm. The pictures presented earlier by the applicant prove that. That will just transform the beauty of the historic center into a little piece of Bridgeport, Connecticut, or some Soviet factory town. And how can this be done? By demanding three or four waivers. Now, they spoke lightly of it, just I'll take one of them being the, the lighting. Well, the actual, uh, regulation states that section six point seven point two point B is that the lighting intensity shall not exceed zero point five foot candles at grade level. But they are asking for a waiver that exceeds two point five foot candles. So it's five times what the regulations require. Waivers, what is the point of ordinances anyway? If they can be pushed aside as if they had no purpose. The purpose of ordinances are there to protect the full community from such an unsightly overbuild. And by full community, I mean not only the neighbors, but the people who live in, in Lebanon, who want it to be attractive site for dinner and theater and the library and other beautiful places. We are very much opposed to this project as submitted. If the board approves it, that will be forever to its discredit. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else from the public?
I'd like to speak.
Yes, please. Please introduce yourself.
Uh, this is Andrew Garthwait. I'm a resident of Green Street and also Chair of the Board at Ava Gallery. Um, there are many details of this proposal that do not meet the planning regulations. But I'd like to concentrate really on the big picture. That's where you really need to start. Um, uh, Tim, do you have the, the plan I, I sent to you? Ready?
Yes.
Thank you. I'd like to see the site plan. Actually, the, the, um, uh, the project team provided a plan of, of most of downtown as a context. And then, uh, if we can start with that of the plan, please, Tim, the, the whole, sorry, the whole downtown site. But, and then they also had a site plan of their bill, of their pro- proposal, but not oriented with the other site plan and not collaged together, because I think that this is extremely illuminating. Uh, if we go back to the planning regulations, not once, but twice do they say, the overall intensity of site development shall be harmonious with the municipality, the neighborhood, and adjacent properties. This is in Article One, Enactment and General Provisions, Specific Purposes. It's not like a, a feel-good thing. It's specific purposes. And then under Article Six, Design and Construction Requirements, it says general requirements. It's not optional. It's a requirement that you be harmonious with the, with the municipality, the neighborhood, and adjacent properties. I think at the municipality level, this is not harmonious. You will see this building looming over the downtown from Edgar eighteen as you approach on the streets to the historic center of Lebanon. So at a large scale, you'll see this from, from behind Sacred Heart. So at municipal level, this will be a, a large presence. And then, as you can see from this plan, as, as one of the previous speakers was saying, the footprint is like twice as large as Ava Gallery. It's larger than Roger's House. It's even larger than City Hall. Then it's five stories tall when all of the surrounding buildings are so much smaller. I think it really is unharmonious on so many, so many levels. Um, there are these other, the proximity to the public library, I think, is, it's, is less than ten feet from building to building. And that's, again, this is a choice, not a necessity. Um, it's a choice of, of the developer. And, um, you know, building this tall even changes the wind patterns around it. Um, if, uh, if Tim, if you could go to the next plan that I submitted as well. Um, I, in this plan, I've taken the site plan and highlighted the impervious areas. And I realized in tonight's presentation that I have actually not included all of the impervious areas. There's some, um, on the Eastern Drive, there's a swath there that's indicated as being pervious when it's actually impervious driveway. So there's even more. But it, on the cover sheet of what was submitted, it indicates that, um, impervious areas, so this is roof. This is driveways, sidewalks, uh, curbing, things like that, um, is sixty-one percent coverage. By my calculations, it's actually sixty-six percent coverage. Two-thirds of the lot is covered by impervious, um, surfaces. So I think that the Bank Street neighborhood is really quite an intact historic area. And, um, uh, as we, as you saw in that early, uh, lithograph view, very little change since the eighteen eighties. But this would be an enormous change. It's completely unharmonious with, um, with the neighborhood. It really shatter the experience of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Other people from the public?
Mr. Chairman, Woody Rose here?
Yes.
Um, I've, I've lived at sixty-one Elm Street, uh, for over forty years. My wife, Anne Brooks, and I raised two kids here.
Woody, can you speak up a little bit? You're a little distant.
I've lived at, uh, sixty-one Elm Street, uh, roughly three blocks from this development. My wife, Anne Brooks, and I raised two kids here. Um, I, I think for openers, uh, you should be aware that you're, you're, you're affecting one of the finest neighborhoods actually in the Upper Valley. And as parents, we really appreciate this neighborhood because our kids could walk everywhere. Um, if you're around here, uh, at, uh, between quarter of and three o'clock in the afternoon, you'll see school buses dumping kids off uh, that are going to walk, um, to the CCB, uh, for afternoon activities. Um, I'm concerned about traffic patterns. What's going to happen when people can't make that left turn as, as, as some people have mentioned here? Is it going to force traffic up onto Elm Street? Um, I'm, I'm also, uh, concerned about, uh, Ma- Mastro's point that, uh, that the overflow is I, I've spent some time in the basement of fourteen Green Street, which is possibly too far from that snow pile, uh, that's going to be accumulating all winter long. Um, on, on the, on the left-hand side of that, uh, that big building. Um, I, I'm not sure you can't guarantee that there's going to be water, uh, winding up on the, uh, south side of that fence there. Um, the looming aspect of this building, I, I think is, uh, it, it's, it's just, um, it, it's not, this is not appropriate for this neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Woody. Other people from the public?
Yes. This is Frank. Can you hear me?
I can. Please introduce yourself.
Fran Hancha. I've worked as a crossing guard on the corner of Elm and Bank Street. And in the morning, there are four buses that stop to pick up children between seven oh three and seven thirty-seven. In the afternoon, there are seven buses stopped between two forty and three fifty-four. All of those buses are full. And the children are scattered. Some go to CCB, some go to the library. And where they, and their parents pick them up later, I've almost had my toes run over there. And I see people trying to pull out from Elm Street, and they sit there for ten or fifteen minutes because it's already so much traffic there. And besides the school traffic, Ava Gallery has a tremendous amount of seminars and classes that they give. And on a daily that they give on a daily basis, which produces a whole bunch of traffic. And the Cotter House, they have monthly meetings. And the Historical Society, the Women's Club, Snowmobile Club, CAP, Vital Communities, Airport Group, and Boy Scout leaders. And they also rent out to bridal showers, baby showers, alumni classes. And all of that produces a lot more traffic that I'm sure was not listed in that traffic study. And I really think that the Planning Board should do an in-depth study of the traffic in that area. I'm only talking about the first block. Thank you.
Thank you. Other people from the public?
Mr. Chair, my name is Barry Schuster.
Yes, Barry.
Thank you. I have two topics. One is to echo and support the prior comments, especially because the applicant talks about the charm of Lebanon, and you've heard everybody talk about that. You've heard everyone talk about the waivers are due to the size of the building, not anything to do with the site. Waivers are not warranted. But I'd like to also ask a question, because based upon the information in the application, it appears that the city council first considered the amendments to the zoning ordinance on October 2nd. Ms. Kish appeared before the Planning Board for conceptual review on October 28th and filed her application on November 12th. The application was accepted by the board on November, excuse me, December 9th as complete. But at that time, she represented that there were no waivers at all. And we know that there's been multiple pages of filings with waivers. RSA 676-4 and RSA 676-12 provide that if you want to be protected with the old ordinance, you must file your application before the first legal notice of that zoning amendment. And at least on the record that's in this before the board, it does appear that the city council first posted the notice of that in October, and she filed her application in December, or in November, and heard in December. So I think the board should consider whether she should be applying under the amended ordinance or under the amended ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Barry. Who else do we have from the public?
Mr. Chairman, this is Karen Leo-Hill.
Yes, Karen. Hank, can you hold? Well, I heard Karen first, so Karen, go ahead.
I'm happy to be, will you just keep me on the list? I'm happy to defer to other members of the public.
No, go ahead. You were cut off. I ran out of time for you last time. Please go ahead.
Okay. Thank you very much. I would like to underscore, in the interest of keeping things brief, I'd like to underscore what Planning Board, Matthew Hall's comments were at the beginning of the meeting. I certainly can understand the concerns that Butters have raised this evening. I think anytime there's a significant change being proposed for a neighborhood, it's very disturbing, undoubtedly, and particularly for people who are the direct neighbors. I have a question, which is, I understand that there are waivers being requested. It sounds to me that one of the most significant concerns is around the height and the size of the proposed development. Is the applicant filing any kind of, are there any, is her project requiring any kind of special exceptions or variances in order to proceed? Or is it within current, within the Planning Board regulations?
I understand, Karen, is that it's within the regulations, that the height is 50 feet, and that is permissible within what was the Central Business District. It's still permissible within the Lebanon downtown regulations. But there are four waivers that we, I was hoping to get to tonight, but obviously we're not going to get to, that would need to be approved in order for this to move ahead.
Okay. But the waivers are not related to size or to height?
Correct.
They certainly are.
They are related to where the building is positioned.
If the building weren't that large, they wouldn't need the waivers.
Fair enough. But all I'm saying, Kathy, is the size itself meets the definitions within our regulations. 50 feet is the height that's permissible in the Central Business District. Karen, did I cover your point?
You did. And I'll just wrap up by saying that I think the Planning Board is, I don't envy the position that the Planning Board is in, in making a decision this evening. And yet, there are many times when, as public officials, we are asked to make decisions that are sometimes unpopular. Our responsibility is to look at the regulations as they are, not to impose or project our personal opinions about what those regulations should be onto projects. We are required to look at the regulations as they are and to apply them judiciously. Democracy says that if we don't like those regulations, then we ought to work together with our neighbors to change those regulations. And it certainly does sound that there may be interest in, among citizens of downtown Lebanon, in reviewing some of the standards in some of the neighborhoods. And this is why it's important for citizens to participate in discussions about zoning ordinance amendments. And so it is our responsibility, however, to apply the current regulations to the projects that come before us and not to impose our personal opinions on them. While I heard Mr. Carpenter's point earlier that the city is more likely to defend the Lebanon Planning Board than maybe the town of Hanover was in that particular case, the legal standards are the same regardless of whether it's the town of Hanover or the city of Lebanon. And so the Planning Board certainly should be aware that there is, there are legal standards, there are, and that the decisions that the Planning Board makes are serious, and that there are consequences if the statutes and the ordinance is not applied faithfully.
Thank you for that, Karen. I will follow that up by making a pitch to anyone that's on this call. We are always looking for volunteers to join the Planning Board. And if you find this discussion of interest, and you would like to contribute to that, we would be more than welcome to see you as a member of the Planning Board. Other members of the public?
Someone has their hand raised and has had it for some time.
I can't see any, sorry.
Someone named Laura?
Yes, thank you. It's Laura Harris Hirsch on Green Street. I'd like to mention something, two things I think are extremely important. In terms of the impact that these buildings will have on the neighborhood, it's important to realize that it's not only impact on Green Street residents, but on a much bigger area of generally called downtown Lebanon. And it's, that is the neighborhood, not only Green Street and Bank Street. Also regarding traffic, the people who are going to live in these apartments are soon going to realize that instead of going out those driveways and going left, that it's more efficient to go to the right and go down, say, Allen Street, Elm Street, both directions, down to Heater Road, et cetera. So a traffic study needs to include possible added traffic on those streets, as well as to realize that now already people are avoiding the park by going down or up the side streets so that there is a lot more traffic than there used to be on the, say, the inner streets of the neighborhood. And it's not only the exit or entrance to the plot that will be affected. Finally, I'd like to say that as far as harmony, it looks to me like that building in the back is, I'm not sure how to express this, but that is at an angle, it's not flush with the other buildings. And it strikes me, it's going to be very jarring to see that, because not only is it not going to fit in from size, but even with the new plans for it, it is going to jar the eye because it is at an angle compared to the front of the street and the other buildings in the project. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Other people from the public?
We are starting to run down. We'll have 15 minutes left this evening. Continue this.
This is Colin Smith. I live on Kimball Street, and I'm also the Chair of the Pedestrian and Bicycle Advisory Committee. I wanted to make a couple of points about traffic and impact on pedestrians. First is just looking at the estimates of peak hour traffic that the applicant provided. I don't think those are quite an appropriate use of that equation to estimate the traffic. The, I think they showed that the existing buildings have nine units and generate 20 trips. And then we have, which is more than two trips per unit. The new development had approximately 50 units and only an additional, I think it was additional 19 or 20 trips in the peak hour. You know, that's really just because of the way the equation that they used works with a linear equation with a large constant. It's probably estimated from much bigger apartment developments in larger urban areas. So it's not really appropriate for the use here. If you think of the type of people, you know, the current use of that, of those houses, you know, they probably, it's relatively low car ownership, you know, the sort of nine units is probably relatively few trips from there. A much, you know, the much bigger new development will probably generate far more trips than the applicant is, a far larger increase in trips than the applicant is suggesting. So I've, you know, agree with some of the other concerns that my neighbors have raised about traffic in the area. Thinking about the, you know, we have three driveways there that are going to be much more intensively used. I'd have to agree with the crossing guard Fran. She, you know, there's a lot of kids using sidewalks there, you know, and so they're going to be kind of interacting with those much more heavily used driveways, you know, going to the library and adjacent places like the CCBA. So I don't think I'd like to see that, you know, heavy intensity of uses of those driveways right by some of those, you know, locations where there's a lot of children going to. So thanks very much.
Thank you for that. Other people from the public?
Someone named Scott.
Now, I see a hand up from Scott Elstrom.
He needs to unmute.
Scott, can you unmute? We're waiting for him. Anyone else? I'm going to bring this conversation to a close. In the meantime, I would ask staff to locate your calendars and suggest a date to which we can continue this meeting.
Victoria Smith, I just tried to get in. Can I get in briefly?
Sure, absolutely. There's still time.
All right. Victoria Smith, I live at 10 Elm Street. I'm right around the corner from Ava Gallery, two doors down from Bank Street, and concerned about the traffic because, as Fran pointed out in the morning, we can't get out of Elm Street because of the traffic. And that doesn't even include the school buses. And I would hope that the board would order a real thorough traffic study, not just of Bank Street, but also what it's going to do to the rest of our neighborhoods. And as everybody's brought out some good points about the traffic, there's one thing that everybody seems to be forgetting, and that is that the advanced transit now does go down Bank Street, does go out Route 4 from City Hall to Enfield and Canaan, starting at 5:15 in the morning. It makes 11 outbound trips throughout the day and 11 inbound trips throughout the day, or I'm sorry, 33 trips out and 33 trips inbound. That's 66 trips a day that the advanced transit makes on Bank Street in addition to all the other concerns that we have. So I would agree that a traffic study is absolutely paramount. We must do that. And I thank you for the opportunity to make that point.
Thank you. My last call for comments from the public.
Mr. Chair, this is Tim Corwin.
Yes, Tim.
Dwayne Egner is with us tonight from the Fire Department. I don't know if the board members have any particular questions for him, and might be a good opportunity to ask those now.
All right. Perhaps he could elaborate a little bit on his written submission.
Yes, Scott is trying to talk, Bruce.
All right. I'll ask Dwayne to hold on for a second and turn to Scott. I think we lost Scott.
I thought the host put unmuted.
It's supposed to be included. Zoom.
Was that you, Scott? We're hearing a voice.
Oh, no, he's hearing you.
Can you speak up?
Mr. Chair, this is David Brooks. I think, I think this Scott Elstrom is off the call at the moment. I don't know if he was dropped out through the program, but he's not listed anymore.
All right. Thank you for that, David. So let me turn back to the Fire Department, in particular, comment on the regulation, and I guess why a waiver would or would not be appropriate.
Good evening. This is Dwayne Egner from the Fire Department. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
All right. So with regards to the written comment, Tim had reached out to the Fire Department looking for some input on the waiver request submitted by Ms. Kish. So in reviewing the Planning Board requirement, we also looked to the 2018 International Fire Code, which is adopted by city ordinance, for some clarification and some guidance in regards to the specific request about the 22-foot fire lane around the rear of the building. In researching the Fire Code, there was some pretty clear guidance that the Fire Code official, being the Fire Chief, has the ability to waive the specific access request, which I had put in the email I sent to Tim, which I believe you all have a copy of. I'm at home, so excuse me, I don't have the book in front of me. I can't quote it exactly. So in reviewing the guidance in the Fire Code, the Fire Chief, Chief Christopoulos, Assistant Chief Libby, and myself met, and we reviewed the site plan and determined that under the Fire Code provisions, the Fire Department had the Fire Department has the ability to waive Fire Department access to the rear of the building, which is the rationale that we provided in looking at this project. Understanding the need that Lebanon is in a housing crunch. Um, we did not take into account the size of the building or the public comments when we evaluated that. We looked at it strictly from the Fire Code. And that was the termination that we came to. Is there, is there anything more that I can try to elaborate or answer any questions on that?
Chair.
Yes.
This is Kathy. I have a question for Mr. Egner. Um, remembering a similar um, suggestion for the new building, the Merrick, that was proposed up on Mount Support Road, which had only a vacant hillside mountain behind it. I was wondering if the Fire Department took into consideration the fact that less than 20 feet in back of this building on several properties, there are residential buildings made of wood that um, predate the, any codes that would have any kind of sprinkler systems or fire suppression in them.
So we did consider that. This building under the current Fire Code would be required to have an automatic fire sprinkler system installed within it. Um, the track record for automatic fire sprinkler systems extinguish, either extinguishing fires completely or keeping them in check long enough for Fire Departments to get to them and finish extinguishment is a very high percentage rate. I can, I know within the city in my almost 20 years here, we've had several sprinkled properties that have had small fires that were either contained or completely extinguished before our arrival. So the, with the installation of the automatic fire sprinkler system in combination with the alarm requirements to report to the fire station to notify us early, it reduces the likelihood of a catastrophic fire in that building that would have the potential to spread to the adjoining buildings.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. All right, we're running out of time.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, David, I was just, I was just going to say to the public, we're going to continue this to the next meeting. Um, the next, next meeting, I would hope to put the four waivers at the beginning of that discussion. And then, once we're done with the waivers, uh, come back for further comments from the public and the board. David?
Yes, Mr. Charles Dupuy has asked to speak. I believe he's on the call now if uh, if he wants to speak up.
All right, Mr. Dupuy. Mr. Dupuy, are you there?
Also Chair Garland, I'm showing that um, that Scott Ellstrom is still on and unmuted. So you could also ask.
I was just noticing that. So let me, I, I don't know what's happened to Mr. Dupuy. Uh, Scott, are you there?
Well, this is Kathy Ellstrom. I'm his mother and I'm using his computer and I didn't know how to make it work. So um, it's an app and I don't use these. But anyway, I just wanted to read something from the master plan and I know it's not binding, but it's um, section 2D1, it says historical resources. Many of Lebanon's most valuable historical resources are located close to or, or in our most densely developed areas. As the city grows, there will be land use changes within and adjacent to existing developed centers. Care should be taken to protect historic resources within these centers. The existing downtown historic district should be evaluated for expansion to include the area south of Bank Street and east of School Street.
Thank you for that.
What, what was that from, Ms. Ellstrom?
The master plan.
Oh, okay, thank you.
The historic section.
Mr. Dupuy, are you there? All right, I'm going to have to close this out. So I'm now turning to staff and asking what would be an appropriate date to continue this discussion, to which we'll continue this discussion.
Uh, Mr. Chair, this is David Brooks. Uh, looking ahead at the calendar, your, your, obviously your regular meeting, regular work session meeting on the 22nd is already full. This is a five Monday month, so the 29th, Monday, the 29th is a possibility. Uh, looking beyond that, um, July, I believe 21st, either the 14th is a possibility, which is a Tuesday, or the 21st is a Tuesday. Those are some possibilities coming up.
I would be in favor of the 29th, so let me ask other board members to apply on that. We need to make a decision as to what date uh, we're going to choose to continue this.
This is Matt Hall.
Yes, Matt.
Uh, the 29th works for me.
This is Monroe. The 29th works for me.
This is Tom. The 29th works for me.
This is Stavis. The 29th works for me.
This is Kathy. I'm fine with that as well.
All right, excellent. So I've got enough people. Matt, can I have a motion from you, please?
Uh, yes, I, I move that the planning board continue this application till it's meeting on Monday, June 29th.
Can I have a second to that?
I'll second that. Stavis here.
Uh, Mr. Chair, just before, before you call the vote, um, could you clarify the time of that meeting? Because that's not one of your regular meeting dates.
So I believe there would be a 6:30 meeting. Any discussion on that point?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, this is Laurel. Stavis?
Yes.
If we could start any earlier that date, it would be a great help to me.
What do you mean by earlier? Six?
I was thinking maybe 5:30.
All right, we've done that before. Does anybody have an objection to 5:30 on the 29th?
Uh, this is Matt Hall. Um, I probably couldn't do earlier than six.
All right, can we compromise on six?
amend the motion?
All right, yes. So um, Matt, would you please restate the motion?
Yes, um, I move that the planning board continue this application um, to Monday, June 29th at 6:00 PM.
And a second?
Monroe, seconds.
Thank you, Joan. Any discussion? So I'll call a roll call. I am in favor. Jim Winnie?
Counselor Winnie's in favor.
Joan?
Monroe is in favor.
Laurel?
Laurel Stavis is in favor.
Kathy?
Kathy's in favor.
Matt?
Matt's in favor.
And Tom?
Tom's in favor.
All right, thank you all, and thank you to the public for your patience and for your questions.
I have a, I have a procedural question. Um, this is Heidi. I'm a member of the public. Can you clarify what the next meeting will be about and the agenda so we can be prepared?
So the, the agenda will be published as always beforehand. Uh, we need to deal with the four um, waivers. Hopefully we can get to those and vote on those waivers, and then we'll continue our deliberations on the full project.
And when you say, just so I understand, deal with the waivers, what does that mean?
Uh-oh, Bruce's transmission seems to be stuck.
Well, while, while this is Tim, while we wait for Bruce to return, the, the answer, um, Heidi, to your question is the, the, um, I think it's the, the intent that the board will, um, as they take this matter up again on the 29th, they'll begin by considering the four waiver requests based on all of the testimony that's been given, uh, both from the applicant and from a butters, um, and all the, the testimony that's provided in, in writing. And based on all of that, they will give consideration to each of the four waivers. Um, once, once those decisions are made, um, depending on, on how the, the waivers are decided, um, the board would then at that point, close the public hearing and enter into deliberation to actually make a determination on the, uh, on the proposal itself.
And is the public allowed to listen to the deliberation?
Yes, absolutely. It's the, the, once, once the public hearing is closed, uh, no one from the public, whether it's the applicant or, or a butters or otherwise is, um, is, is permitted to participate in, in the deliberation. But absolutely, uh, under, under state law, all, all discussion of this application must be out in the open. Uh, and that would be, that would include the deliberation component.
And Tim, is there further opportunity for public comment?
Uh, that, that would be up to the chair and to the board. Um, what, what I'm hearing is not necessarily, um, if the, if the, if the board is, um, do we have Bruce back?
I think that there's a lot more public comment that would be made. Um, and this is not enough time to achieve that.
Okay, so that's, that's something that um, that the chair needs to hear and, and make a, a decision on, uh, from a procedural standpoint.
Um, to only have, that we even have an hour and a half of public comment is not enough on a project of this scale and import.
Tim, this is Robin Carpenter. Were you suggesting that the 20, the meeting on the 29th would be final decision time?
I, I'm, I'm not, I'm just going, I'm just, just interpreting what uh, the chair said before he was, was disconnected. Um, so it's, it's, it, I, I don't, I don't know. It sounds like there's more, there's more public testimony that needs to be um, given a chance to be heard. So um, perhaps it's, it's, again, I'm, I'm speaking out of term to a certain extent here, but it might make sense to continue with public comment, at least for a certain amount of time on the 29th. And then, um, and then the, the applicant should probably be given an opportunity to respond to that public comment. Uh, and then it might be, make more sense, uh, at that point to um, to enter into discussions about the, the waiver request.
Hey, David?
Yes, sir.
I think Laurel as well.
Yeah, hang on. Um, Matt, before you get started, Heidi, could you provide your last name for the, for the minutes?
Sure. Connor, C-O-N-N-E-R.
Thank you. Um, Matt, in, unless until Bruce can get back into the meeting, I think you would take over. Uh, and I know I did hear Laurel speak up as well with a, with a question, but I don't.
Yes, uh, thank you. Um, Matt, is that?
Please, please.
Okay. Um, so going back to the staff recommendations memo, um, on page 10, at the bottom of the page, um, there is a um, condition to be satisfied prior to application for a building permit. And, and the last one on that page mentions the applicant obtaining permission from city council water and sewer flows.
I, I have to interrupt with Tim and David's permission. Technically, when, uh, when we cannot continue any kind of discussion other, like little things like what was asked, what will be the agenda? It, you know, but we can't get into any kinds of other discussion after.
Right, since the board has already voted to continue this application to the, to June 29th at 6:00 PM.
Right, my fault, sorry.
No, sorry, yeah. So that.
I have a quick question then, just a little question, really. When the fire person said, "I made this, we made this decision before we heard public opinion, et cetera." Nope.
Yeah, that's, yeah, for the 29th.
Okay.
Sorry, rules are rules.
So we'll, um, thank you all. Um, we'll move now to, um, I think staff, unless you have any other points, I think we'll move to the um, new applications for ADIMAP.
Correct.
Is there, sorry, sorry to interrupt, but is there any way for us to know if public comment will continue to be heard on the June 29th meeting? Or is it closed completely?
No, it's not closed.
The, the public hearing is not closed.
Okay, so you'll continue to take comments?
Correct.
Oh, Bruce is back.
And it sounds like Mr. Chairman is back.
And I had to run off and find another one. So Matt, carry on.
Well, no, Mr. Chair, you're here.
All right, I'm just catching up. So um, it sounds to me like we're ready to begin with the ADIMAP. Um, so Tim, I will ask you to give us an assessment as to completeness of this.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. The uh, planning board has reviewed the application for completeness uh, in accordance with our site plan review reg- regulations. We recommend that the board consider it complete enough to accept jurisdiction and to commence review.
Any discussion from board members? Matt, may I have a, a, a motion to um, accept this as being complete? So moved. And a second?
Thirty seconds.
Thank you, Kathy. Any discussion from board members? So I will start the roll call. I am in favor. Jim?
Counselor Winnie is in favor.
Joan?
Monroe is in favor.
Laurel?
Laurel's in favor.
Kathy?
Kathy votes yes.
Matt?
Matt's in favor.
And Tom?
Tom's in favor.
That is unanimous. Thank you very much. Now, I understand that the applicant has a presentation to make. Is that correct?
I, I guess this would be my moment. This is Kevin Warden with Engineering Ventures.
Yes, Kevin.
Great, thank you. I'll keep it brief. Um, I'm here on behalf of ADIMAP and other team members. And if Tim will allow me to share my screen, uh, I can.
Yeah, yes, please, please go ahead. Thanks, Kevin.
Great. First, thank you all for your diligence and, uh, and timely reviews. Uh, we've been meeting over the past few months and unlike many other municipalities, you've continued to uh, do your duty to review these projects and that's much appreciated. So we were before you uh, for this parcel, I think in April, for a boundary line adjustment. Uh, this is a um, parcel at Seven Lucent, which is kind of in the back end of Centerra. And it's where ADIMAP resides, which is a kind of research and development tech industrial company um, that started in DRTC and did well as an incubator there and moved into this building and is, is in need to expand again. We've also been to the Conservation Commission and zoning board of adjustment uh, since meeting with you. The portion of the 1010 lots um, shown here uh, has wetlands on it, and so we received a special exception um, to impact those wetlands. There's close to an acre and a half of wetland uh, on the, that portion of the parcel. And we are looking to impact around 7,000 square feet. Kept the, the impact as small as possible. Um, so I'll move right ahead then into the existing conditions. This is the existing building located at Seven Lucent. Seven Lucent is shown, sorry, Lucent drive is shown at the top of the page. Uh, there's a small parking area in front of Seven Lucent. And this is the trapezoidal shape of property that was um, added to Seven Lucent through the boundary line adjustment. The wetland is shown in this area here. And the upland is on the far side or the west edge of the parcel. This is the proposed site plan. A lot of the information was kind of peeled away working with Tim to try to make it as legible as possible. I do have another plan with utilities and contours with more detail. But here you can see the proposed features, which include a three-story addition located here. located here, which is able to connect through to the existing building. There's a continuation of the loading dock and an ability to have a fire access to the addition, which has been coordinated with Dwayne Egner from the Lebanon Police Fire Department. There's some utility functions right located north of the addition. Dumpsters are there now and will be relocated there. propane tank, transformer generator, et cetera. And then the other portion of the project is a new parking lot with 91 parking spaces that is accessed off the very end of Lucent Drive here. In the center of that parking lot is a biofiltration area. The parking is shaped sort of like a bowl that drains to the middle. It filters down through that and then back to the next sheet. You'll see on the west side of the parking, below the parking, and there are infiltration chambers. And this is a point I want to stop briefly to note. We've been coordinating with Tim Corn and Brian Vincent, city engineer, about some questions and concerns related to stormwater management and separation from seasonal high water table. So these chambers have been moved. If you're looking at the plans you have since our original submittal, they've been moved to the west where the native grade drops off, and they're a little shallower than before, so they're able to maintain at least a foot of separation between the bottom of these infiltration and attenuation chambers and the seasonal high water. And we're currently coordinating with the city engineer to determine whether a liner should be used under this filtration system here. Then there's a elevated boardwalk that leads from the parking to the addition here, and that's shown as this S curve. Since we're on the utility plan, I will just point out briefly that there are culverts proposed under the drive. Based on the recommendation from the Conservation Commission, we've added two rather than one and are looking at having a natural bottom channel on those so that small animals and otherwise can move back and forth portions of the wetland. The stormwater pond that exists on the site will be expanded in this area because there's a little bit of fill in this area. That pond will be, its function will be maintained, which treats the parking building that exists on the site. The outfall from that will be extended under the proposed drive. Water and other utilities will be brought in through the building, except sewer that will be put in a forest main, which will run up and tie into the existing sewer that exists in Lucent Drive. And that's getting close to what I wanted to present. I think there's an erosion control plan. Stormwater details, if anyone has questions. Here are elevations of the proposed addition. The existing building is on the left. See here, for reference, there's the sign that says ADIMAP. This is the loading dock that exists. And then this is the addition, two stories, which are kind of above grade, and then the third story, which is below the existing first floor. The natural grade drops off here on the lower left. We do have a lighting plan, and I understand this is our first time meeting with you, so rather than get into a lot of detail, just put it up, but it does meet the lighting ordinance requirements. LED full cutoff and then some ballard lights along the path to the addition. And finally, a landscaping plan. We are asking for a few waivers specifically around landscaping. You know, we've done what we can to maintain as much of the existing woods. In fact, you know, the woods are kind of coming up and around the building. There needs to be a little bit of work to build the building, so we're proposing to leave that clear, but then have the landscaping exist around it. Whereas we would normally be required to have landscaping in the 10 feet around the building, we're proposing to have that open but with views into the existing woods. There's shading requirements are met on the parking lot. And then the perimeter landscaping, we're proposing, again, a waiver, but proposing to leave as much of the existing trees as possible. So with that, that's the complete presentation, and we'd welcome any questions.
Thank you for that, Kevin. Tim, can I have staff comments, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wasn't expecting that we'd get to staff comments tonight, but for the good of the order, I'll just flesh out the waiver requests. There are two others. Kevin went through the landscaping waivers, and the two others are, one that's becoming very familiar, which is Section 65B5, the 22-foot fire lane that's required to the rear buildings, as well as 65B4, I think, which requires all projects to install sidewalks along the street frontage. Providing a sidewalk here, I think maybe in retrospect might have been a good idea when the building was originally constructed, but it might not make sense to require that at this point for this project, so that is a waiver that's being requested. We did receive some additional materials from the applicant today that Kevin touched on briefly during his presentation, so we'll, staff will have to take another look at those between now, and we're hoping that the board will agree to continue this hearing until the Monday, June 22nd meeting. The only drawback to that is that we have to get you your agenda packet tomorrow. I don't know that we'll have a full and complete review of the new materials included as part of the staff memo for tomorrow afternoon, so it's possible we may have some newish comments, if you will, and some revised conditions of approval by next Monday evening, and I'm just asking for your indulgence to allow us a little bit of leeway just to help keep this keep this project on track. I don't think I have anything else necessarily at this time.
So continuing this to a future meeting would also allow the public to have some time to digest this and make comments?
Yes, absolutely.
And I believe that at least you and I agree that continuing it to whatever time, we'll come back to that in a second, would be within the intent of completing the review that evening and making a decision.
Exactly, yes. That was the idea, yes.
All right, so we have a few minutes. Do we have any comments from board members or questions or whatever? Before I ask for a motion to continue?
This is Kathy. I just have a couple of quick questions.
Please, Kathy.
For Kevin. I noticed that, as he mentioned, the Conservation Commission suggested that larger covert, I guess for want of a better description, so that wildlife could go from one side to the other. Could Kevin point out where that is on this screenshot?
I don't know if you can see the highlighted?
Yes. In yellow.
Yeah.
And so when it came from the Conservation Commission, it came more as a suggestion than a requirement, but you're putting it on the plans and committing to do it. Is that right?
Yes, indeed, and we're also, the Conservation Commission's comments go to the New Hampshire DES, and we're in the middle of applying for the wetland permit from the DES, so they're also requesting that and some, you know, other items they've had some questions on.
And then my second question was with regard to the tree line in the middle of the parking, the new parking lot. There was some mention about putting some sort of netting or filtering in that basin. Would the tree roots just grow through that, or how would that work?
Well, I'm glad I included this plan. So the way it works, you know, a lot of islands and parking lots, if you drive around, they're surrounded by curbing, and water doesn't have a chance to get to them, and those trees starve for water and don't grow that much. What we're showing here is the, both sides of the parking lot flow into that island. Notice there's no curbing. And then the trees are planted in a bio retention soil, which is, you know, good for the tree, but also allows water to filter down through. The tree roots won't grow through the lining, but you know, it's quite wide, this dimension. Let's see here, it's about 12 feet wide. And so the water filters down through, and what we have shown here, and we're working with city engineer on, is a liner, which is fairly common in stormwater practice. And there's just a ongoing discussion around whether stormwater practices should intermingle with groundwater, and so at this point, we're showing the liner to prevent that intermingling. Until the treatments happen, it flows out through this pipe shown on the left. It'll flow under the parking into these arched chambers where if it can infiltrate, it will. There's fairly limited infiltration capability here just because we're so close to the wetlands, and then it will flow out slowly at pre-development rates back into the woods.
Thank you.
Other comments, questions? May I have a motion to continue this discussion to the June 22nd meeting?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Matt Hall, so moved.
Thank you. A second?
Tom seconds.
Thank you, Tom. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Yes, Joan.
Okay, that's going to a meeting that we already have scheduled, so that one would be 6:30.
Yes, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Not, I'll do a roll call. I am in favor. Jim Winnie?
Counselor Winnie's in favor.
Joan?
Monroe is in favor.
Laurel?
Laurel's in favor.
Kathy?
Kathy's in favor.
Matt?
Matt's in favor.
And Tom?
Tom's in favor.
That is unanimous. Thank you all, and thank you, Kevin. We'll see you on the 22nd. Next item on our agenda is other business. I don't believe there is any other business, but David, please correct me.
I have nothing.
Does anyone else have any other business?
Don't, oh, right, we haven't gotten up to approval of minutes yet.
No, that'll be right after this. So I don't hear anyone for other business. I'm going to say that there's none, and we will now ask for comments on the minutes for May 26th.
This is Kathy.
Yes, Kathy.
Page 6, line 32. My first name is incorrectly spelled.
Oops, I missed it. I apologize. Any other comments?
One tiny typo.
Well, that was a tiny typo too, so we'll make it two.
Okay, two. On page, this is Monroe, on page 6, line 46, the end, input from, not form. Pretty close.
I think I saw that one.
Oh, oh.
You're right.
And one other one. Page 6, line 37, where it says Ms. Monroe was off, I would like it to have temporarily. Because that's what it was. I didn't leave or turn myself off. I got tossed off, but I got back on as soon as I could.
Sounds familiar.
Yes, temporarily, please.
Any other comments? May I have a motion to approve the minutes as amended? Who was that? I'm sorry, that was Tom?
No, that was Laurel.
Laurel, I apologize. A second?
Tom will give the second.
Thank you. Any discussion? So I am in favor. Jim?
Counselor Winnie's in favor.
Joan?
Monroe is in favor.
Laurel?
Laurel's in favor.
Kathy?
Kathy votes yes.
Matt?
Matt's in favor.
And Tom?
Tom's in favor.
And one last one who would like to jump into the breach? I heard Jim finish it off, please.
Move, we adjourn.
And a second?
Tom seconds.
I think I heard Tom before you, Matt, so I'm going to go with Tom. Any discussion? I'm in favor. Jim?
Counselor Winnie's in favor.
Joan?
Monroe is in favor.
Laurel?
Laurel's in favor.
Kathy?
Kathy's in favor.
Oh, yes.
And Tom?
Tom is in favor.
That is unanimous. Thank you all. I don't know if anyone from the public is still on. Thank you for bearing with us. I think that it was, again, a very useful meeting. Appreciate everyone's cooperation. Get home safely, and we'll see you soon.